Next on is the indication by Chris Allen of Valley Baptist Church called by Pleasure Leaguers from Alderman West.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council for your opportunity. I was told to pray extra hard because you have to put up with me.
Our Father in Heaven, thank you for this place and time to be able to assemble together to meet and discuss the business of this fine city. Thank you, Lord, for these officials and the residents that are gathered together to push for the well-being of this town and the people and businesses they call Green Valley Home. Thank you, Lord, for the police officers and firefighters and other first responders that stand between us and disaster and that are there in times of need. Thank you for the religious community that stands united to offer assistance and hope, not only to those in need but to those experiencing your blessings, especially during this time of rejoicing and the celebration of Holy Week. Thank you for the sacrifice of Jesus Christ on the cross and for His resurrection that we celebrate this Sunday on Easter that gives us the assurance of salvation to all who believe. As this meeting begins and concludes, and for all that is said tonight, we pray for the presence of the Lord and the wisdom of God to overshadow these proceedings and we invoke Your will upon this place. We proudly stings tonight in the name of Your Son, our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Do the flag of the United States of America and do the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, next time is approval of the agenda.
No changes, Mr. Mayor.
See, no changes to the agenda and no proclamations. We'll move on to citizens' participation. We ask citizens who wish to address the board, come forward to the podium or microphone and address the board and please give your name and address for the record. Everyone who wishes to address the board, it's me.
We're gonna kind of bounce off each other. My name's Autumn Chambers and this is my next door neighbor.
Rose is Lachlan.
And we're here to kind of talk about Charlie's Bar, the Roadhouse. The noise is just a lot, guys. I have an autistic daughter who has had to be in a five-point harness on the bed bus. I didn't realize she couldn't communicate to me. She was saying it was the bumping. She was in the harness because she was falling asleep on the bus. So, I didn't know that until, and that's been a year. So, there are multiple other things. They built a parking lot, so people are, you know, urinating on the back of their stens. So, there's, you know, that. And then the biker wash, the female, you know, in bikinis and less. I have a seventeen-year-old son as well. You know. We do have a petition from multiple people on our street that agrees we would like some sort of resolution, you know, eleven o'clock, sound barrier, get seven thirty, speedway, you know, kind of rules, something like that. We know that they've had multiple violation codes and we have filed a few complaints ourselves, so those are on file. I know that there have been times where, which, by the way, we love our police force. Everybody is wonderful, they're sweet, they're amazing. Everybody is really on top of it and great. There's been times when they go down and they ask them to be quiet and thirty minutes later it's twice as loud as it was before. So, I think that's disrespect to our police force and I don't appreciate that either. So, you know, I know that they bring in revenue, but I also know that the money that we're spending on our police force down there all the time between, you know, Charlie's and with Tango, which is Tango, they're out, you know, by I-70, it's not a problem. They, I don't understand why we need two three AM bars, especially when it's right by a housing addition. They have added a garage back door, a garage on the back of the building. There are speakers that point literally towards our house. No point in that. I don't know why they turn those on. There are beer cans that are littered in our yard. I think what people are doing are drinking beer and throwing them in our yard and then going inside. There's property damage to the back of my property, which isn't a big deal, but people used, patrons would go through my tent, so we boarded it up. So, you can see that there's like three newer boards there that my husband boarded up the patrons from going through our yard. Let's see. We have gotten to the point where we are worried for our safety. There have been, there was one time specifically, I'll let Rose tell you about that, that was her.
First of all, I'd like to say this was brought to the board's attention back in May of two thousand sixteen. It's been a minute that the neighbors were complaining, so it's been an ongoing since two thousand sixteen. They are open till three o'clock and normally they will crank up their music after midnight. And then they crank it up really loud. I can hear it in my bedroom. I try to plug fans, you know, you can still hear it. It's a really heavy day. They open up the garage doors, sorry.
Oh, well, I'll tell them, I guess you say.
They will open up the garage doors or their exit door in the back. They will congregate in the back and the more they drink, the more they start arguing and fighting among themselves in the back.
This is a half video and so it involves a lot.
Yeah, and this is like at two or three o'clock in the morning. So, that's a danger to the neighborhood, to people that are out driving at that time of night that may not be drunk, but maybe he run into one of these drunk. We have a lot of young families in our neighborhood with the youngest children. They don't need to hear the cursing in the evening or the loud, noisy music and other CDJs out back to the floor.
Right. And along with that, I'd like to add, I have three children, four, six, and seventeen, and my six-year-old is an autistic. My myself, I have some serious disorders. We're still looking at my blood count, I have eight years of them. I have migraines, seizures, autoimmune, I need my sleep. My husband is seventy-four years old, he has a spinal cord injury. The night before he went, it was President's Day, so it was like the Sunday before President's Day. He had surgery on President's Day. I was out there at three AM with police officers and I had to be up by five to take my husband to have a spinal surgery. That was really upsetting. That was really upsetting. So, we have enough just in our home, we need our sleep. So, the disrespect, and it's gone on past three before too, with patrons, so I'm not even sure if that's legal. So, sorry, I cut you off. I wanted to tell them that my husband was, his spinal cord injury, he was in a wheelchair.
Now, one night, and I think this was March sixteenth or seventeenth of St. Patrick's, and I had to actually, the police chief had given me the bar owner's number. He said, if you, you know, just call over there and tell them to turn it down. Well, he didn't answer. She's called and nobody answered. They don't turn it down. And about an hour and a half later, my son, who was outside because he couldn't sleep either, saw a truck leave the bar come around and park in front of my house. And my son went out to the driveway and the guy drove off. I gave the license plate number to a police officer and he didn't hear it well.
Yeah, anyway, which is a very awkward way to love you.
And are we gonna get into the motorcycle stuff?
Okay, yeah. So, they built what, I'm sure, I don't know how much you guys know, but they built a parking lot in the back.
It's a nice parking lot, there's no barriers. They park right up against the fence.
Right, they just say it's parking lot. So, it's a pathway and it's some sort of gravelish and then people park up against the fence. But what I was told by one person, I do know that frequents the bar, that they are going to be adding a burnout cage, which is literally a cage that they're gonna put their motorcycles in and burn out and have little competitions.
Now, this is a bar, it's not a motorcycle pub and it's not a racetrack.
It's not a strip club.
And it's not some kind of, you know, this is an ongoing, what they're trying to do there has nothing to do with being a bar as far as I'm concerned.
There's Facebook photos on Facebook of girls with no tops, you know, that's why I say it's not a strip club. So, I think it's kind of, my family owns businesses, I'm not looking to sell anybody down. I just want to, you know, meet me in the middle, little respect, little, you know.
It's hard to get up and work and go to work in the morning and you've been up till three o'clock. And the police officers are getting tired of coming by and we'd even call them, we'd call Jackson County, they'll say, well, we're not gonna send anyone unless you file a complaint. And then the police officers say, well, you know, fine, you know, we just don't know where to turn. They can't be getting away with it for way too long.
No, no, I've talked, I've talked to both of you recently about it, so, I don't, Chief did you, I mean, I know, I've talked to you about it too, 'cause I know one night I called, we talked on the phone about it and we never talked to you, so.
Yeah, we went down there in the evening and talked to Autumn that night.
I mean, how many are we, I'm assuming we're getting, are we getting a lot of calls there, most, I mean?
Well, I have local cards, so, the officers that are in the main house. So do I, I forgot, I left my own.
He lives there.
I have owned the house since nineteen eighty-nine. I've recently moved back in, two and a half years ago.
And I will be there two years in my house, April, July.
Did you know the bar was there?
I don't know. Anyway, well, she knew, but they only show us the house at like certain times in the day. I did, when we were under contract, talk to the owner of the house and asked him if the bar was an issue and he's like, oh, no, they're behind it now. So, so we were under contract. I do understand that there is a bar behind my house, I get that. But I think that there should be a little respect.
No, I agree, but the thing is, I was just wondering if, I mean, I would be really upset with the real estate company, may I ask who that was?
Um.
Because he was putting out, he was interested in selling the house.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Honestly, I, I don't remember off the top of my head, but yeah, it was a whole ordeal getting the house. The guy, that's a whole other story itself.
When we first bought the house back in nineteen eighty-nine, we lived there about four and a half, five years, and it was peak time. But there was not, not this kind of issue with the loud, with the motorcycle stuff going on and the garage door. They put the garage door on last spring, last spring, somewhere around in there.
I used to live on Young Street.
Did you? Okay, yeah. Well, when, back then, her husband could call if they were just, you know, out of control and he would just be like, oh, okay, no problem, and they turned it down.
Rick, we have, you're a kid, but they recited for some code violations as well, all right, recently?
We currently have about a half a dozen violations.
Now, is the gravel number say, I mean, is that all permitted if they did? Okay, so that's one of the things.
And the police is coming.
The building, building permits side, basically that everything that they're talking about, that's what majority of violations are, including some church.
So, what, I mean, what's the follow-through, I mean, do they have?
Basically, they've been out this week, I think this is the week.
Do you know that? Oh, okay.
We had not heard.
I think really probably between what's going on with the police department and what we're handling on the code side, the board needs to discuss if they want to take some sort of action. We can't have continued violations that are disturbing residents that are adjacent. The speakers on the back of the building just absolutely are not permitted, that's a sound disturbance every time they turn those on.
And they, they say they're on fire, they follow the line.
In two thousand sixteen, when they were referencing that, my memory is that when the owner was in here, he had said that they didn't do anything outside, that it was all inside, maybe somebody just left the door open, that's why.
Well, if this is, I mean.
And I video it.
And they also had DJ's out there, like, wasn't it like patio DJ? Who was the, you know, is, is the person?
Yeah, and I can tell you, I was on a, I was on the phone for one night, that maybe, was that St. Patrick's Day?
I think that, yeah.
I was on the phone for one night and it was, I mean, it was still pretty chilly and she was on her back porch and I was talking on the phone and I could hear the music and my wife sitting across the living room could hear the music coming through my phone also, so I think that was the night Captain Bill went out there and I turned it down.
We haven't even had speakers, we haven't even had a radio.
Yeah, I don't, none of that, that was the police, to my knowledge.
Yeah, I'm saying that wasn't the outside speakers, because all the doors were closed up that night too, right?
I think that's when I talked to you, that is Captain Bill went out.
When they, when they were speaking, the three AM license, that was discussion and that was actually a condition of it, is that none of the activity fills out to the outside behind the building, so I guess the.
My experience here is like the parking lot, I mean, the noise is an issue, obviously. Now, because of the parking lot and the burnout cage, you know, I get two serious little girls and men urinating on my fence and I've seen, I can't, I can't deal with that.
Well, you shouldn't have to, I mean, that's completely unacceptable.
And the brushless car wash, you know, my seventeen-year-old son will probably be trying to get his bicycle washed or something, you know, like, that's personal lines for me, that's too far. That's, that's where, but the sound is the first place I want to start, you know.
We don't want to know, I mean, it's like a true shit.
Well, they call it a dive bar.
Do they have pending cases now if they have to come to court for, have they?
There are two pending serving of peace charges, I think one time by each of them. There's been additional nine violations, we haven't issued another citation, but they are adding those to the case files, so that there's no one count. That's not a serving of peace.
Matt, what's your, I mean, is this something that needs to go through the court first with the serving of peace and the code things, or?
Yeah, the code, the code violations and the, I mean, the, those violations need to go through the court, the municipal court system. I mean, if there are zoning type violations, I mean, those initially go through the court system too, I mean, or are you talking about changing zones?
Well, I'm just saying, before this board discusses any type of, you know, warning or anything like that, it no, we need to let that go through.
Well, I mean, that's what code violations are. I mean, if they're violating the terms of the common, then they come to court and it gets addressed through that, that system. I mean, if they're violating the terms of their liquor license, you know, that's something that goes to this court. So, I mean, that, that could be another issue if there's a, if there's liquor license violation, which I think that violating general codes violates a liquor license like that.
Absolutely.
Do we have no ordinance in thirty?
Sixty-five?
Sort of, yeah. Sixty-five, but it only applies to.
Right, the race track, we knew it was ten thirty-nine.
Yeah, but disturbing the peace is, basically takes the place of a sound ordinance, so if your peace is disturbed, then you can sign a complaint. Obviously, the city should not.
And the municipal, the municipal ones, the racing match, that would be fine.
Yeah, and that's within a special zoning use, it's called a conditional use permit when that's issued.
And we have video of it above that, because we actually have one of them.
I think probably our next steps, and Matt, this was the question I was gonna ask, should we wait for this to go to court? But it sounds like with the continued habitual violations that are happening down there, that the board probably needs to convene and at least consider a hearing for revocation of the license.
We're only afraid that, this started in February and this year, so as we're getting into the winter, it's just gonna get, I mean, it's just, I mean, freezing, it's a bit of a.
I mean, I think, I mean, I haven't, I mean, this is the first that I personally have heard about it, so, I mean, I would need to look and see if there are violations of the liquor license, and if there are, then the board can take the appropriate action with respect to the liquor license. But with respect to the general code violations, I mean, those can handle through the court system.
May I ask if it's applicable to like a fine or?
It depends. I mean, generally, well, I mean, it's up to a judge ultimately, what the judge wants to do, I mean, that's, for the city.
It's not applicable to like pay a fine.
Well, it can be. I mean, the city issues the violation and then you go to municipal court and the city has prosecutor who prosecutes the case, there's the judge that's there who decides. Oh, it's a, it's a real court procedure, I mean, it's not a.
Swat a hand and pay a fine.
Well, it's up to the judge, whether the judge says pay the fine, but if there are habitual violations, then the judges don't like that, so.
Well, after the case, I'm, 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 I'm.
The judge dismissed it, I didn't get anything out.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's happened and that's up to the judge.
It might happen.
Did you guys have something you wanted to ask you?
The US about Andy Garden, the owner was also cited with the same money in terms of case on, on their companion family's last son. He said he appeared.
How about this, could we, did you contact the owner and have them come to the next meeting and under?
We happened to feel I had the owner and the manager in for a very direct, private discussion, uh, we agreed they should have made it very clear what was expected. And I told him flat out, I said, this is not, you have not one person who has a hold of the evidence, you can expect, I expect, uh, that all is needed in this court.
Well, there are a lot there. And this is pretty much everybody on our side, you know, the other side.
Can you give your address for the record? If you want, she can take that for the record as well.
Yeah, do you have, um, you got, you got, um, we're, I'm at one oh nine and Rose is at one oh nine.
My question, how's, I mean, the board want to see after the meeting that they have chief if things improve, or do we want them, to call them to meet and talk to them ourselves, or do we want to look a ticket for their action?
I think the suggestion that there be a hearing and that both, both parties can at least have an opportunity to explain or defend their actions or inactions and, I mean, the complaint scene crystal clear what the problems are. It would be nice to hear the defense of the either actions or inactions that the owners of the bar have taken or why they've chosen to ignore the requirements of their liquor license before dropping a hammer on.
There is a new owner.
Do you want to?
The current, the current gentleman purchased the bar recently.
Chad? Or is there a new, like, recent recent?
He's been there for quite some time, but not as an owner of the bar.
Okay, 'cause I know that Charlie, the nighttime manager, was part owner, so maybe Chad bought out Charlie, that I don't know. I know that they were co-owners, I don't know how percentage, I just know that they were at some point in time.
Mayor, I might recommend that we just have the police department codes and myself work to put an executive summary together for the board of the problems and the timelines that have existed, which will include all the violations and the court dates. We can bring that back as a report to the Board of Alderman at the next meeting and at that point we can decide if we want to have the owners come in or if we just want to set up an administrative hearing to, to start some sort of proceeding, at least to get some resolution. It does not have to end in a revocation, it can simply be a hearing to, to let them know what the expectation is.
Will this include possible permit violations relative to building modifications?
Yes.
Garage doors and sort of.
Yeah, we would include all of the nuisance and all of the building code violations as well as the health, or the, the police code violations, the GOSSs that have been issued.
Is it gonna address that at the next Alderman meeting?
Yeah.
Would you like for us to attend?
Yes.
Okay, what would be the date on that?
Theresa.
It's the ninth, April ninth.
April ninth, April ninth.
Yeah, seven o'clock, yes?
Yeah. About that at this point, when we have, sorry if you were getting.
That's fine, I'm.
If, once we get through that process and we set up a hearing for the board, that's where we would actually need to see that, that sort of information, any evidence that you guys have. Absolutely, if you have a problem, if they violate an ordinance, call the police department and sign a complaint against them.
Yeah, which the police department, they've been amazing, they've really, you've really got to support people. I love the town, I love everybody.
Good to hear, because none of them back there were gonna let you out if you said bad.
Good guys, good guys.
Well, thank you.
Yes, thank you all so much, thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the board?
Any other votes to consent agenda?
Mayor, I move that we accept the consent agenda.
I vote Alderman West to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Arnold. Any discussion? Do you know, unfairly say aye?
Aye.
All say the same sign. Do you know previous business, move on to new business. We have a Florida promotion for Curtis Vanderlinen. DC, you kicking that?
Mayor, I'm the board of Curtis Vanderlinen, has approximately twenty years of law enforcement experience in the medical area, including molasses, that he wrote out, and, and, uh, that was today, he's been a modern, he's a rank sergeant and he will take over one of the unit's control office and, uh, I'm very curious to see more of his background.
All right, Mayor Boyce.
Boyce first.
All these. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm.
I'm sorry.
I got another.
Yeah, that's true.
I would just suppose I have a record.
Everybody ready? One more.
Okay. And.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
See no presentations, move on to public hearing. Public hearing for city property zoning change.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, we, just a public hearing and an ordinance receiving regarding current property that the city owns. I'm gonna let Mr. Murphy give the background.
Mayor and board, as you are well aware, the city owns approximately sixteen acres. It's just north of Tisha Lane, should be a map attached to the packet. Basically, it's in between Gateway Court, which is being developed, and then another phase of Snibar Farms subdivision. That property is currently zoned agricultural and the request is to change that to R1 single family, which would mirror what is around it on the east, west, and south side. The north side cannot be built on, that's part of the stream bank restoration, a site, so that is.
Congratulations. See no presentations, move on to public hearing. A public hearing for city property zoning change.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, we, uh, just a public hearing and an ordinance receiving regarding, uh, the current property that the city owns. I'm going to let, uh, Mr. Murphy give the background.
Uh, Mayor and Board, as you are well aware, the city owns approximately 16 acres. Uh, it's just north of Tisha Lane. Um, should be a map attached to the packet. Uh, basically, it's in between Gateway Court, which is being developed, and then another phase of, uh, Snibar Farms subdivision. Uh, that property is currently zoned agricultural. Um, and the request is to change that to R1 single family, which would mirror what is, uh, around it on the east, west, and south side. The north side, um, cannot be built on. That's, uh, part of the stream bank restoration, uh, site. So, that, that is what it is, uh, forever. Um, a little history on it. This, in the early to mid 2000s, there was a plan for that to be developed. And so, in the picture, you can see there's three stub streets that, uh, stop at the property boundary. With the downturn, that plan never came to fruition. Um, but when the city became, uh, owners of that land, and we looked at all of the available uses, uh, we felt that R1 single family would be the, the best use for that land. But we have to go through the process to change that from agricultural to R1.
I'm going to move the, move the podium back over. Chief, can we move it back over? Just in... Uh, just for, uh, all transparency, uh, I do own a lot that backs up to this property that we are getting ready to build a house on here in the next couple of weeks. So, just wanted to make that clear. I did get your notice, so I just wanted to make that clear, but...
Well, I had a lady call me tonight and she's not happy and wants me to vote no. She doesn't want it going with the houses behind her property.
I had Alderman taught and I, uh, I gave your contact info, info to her. Um, she lives along Tisha, I believe. And, um, it sounded as though when she bought the house, her realtor had, uh, kind of told her that it would just be open forever, which is something unfortunately that we hear a lot. Um, you know, I told her some of the things we'd kind of looked at, uh, for the area, like even ball fields or that type of thing, but with the idea of then you're having lights and, and sounds that wouldn't fit in. She was even more against that use, um, you know. But, but basically, we had been looking at every, you know, use for that and what would be the least infringing on the people that are there now. And this would be a similar type development. But she, I, she did inform me that she would, uh, be talking to her Alderman and I gave her that information.
As this is a public hearing, I will open it up for, uh, com- comments from those in attendance. And I'll take that. It's all one back here and one to speak. If you just want to give your name and address for the record?
Okay, it's Jeff Mills. You can wait till we're listing your drive.
My question is, is this going to be strictly single family? No duplex?
Yeah, so this zoning change request is R1 single family, so it is just...
They have four and now they have six or 12 more duplexes about on the other side of, uh, Snibar where the lake is now.
Mm-mm.
We cut it back to where we only had built six.
Yeah.
And I want to know for sure, is there just single family?
Yeah, with the, the entire, the entire 16 acres is just for single family. Uh, duplexes aren't allowed in that zoning, uh, designation.
Ask my question, thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak for, against, on the public hearing? I'll close the public hearing then. Does anyone on the board have any additional questions or comments?
Hey, we're looking at the diagram. We're talking about the area that's just outlined in the red square, basically, right?
That is correct.
Lots that would be on the left-hand side of that square that are kind of outlined. Those are previously platted lots from a prior development that were never...
Correct. Yeah, that was land that was always privately owned. That was never, uh, part of the city-owned property. Um, Graham Homes is currently, uh, putting that subdivision in.
Hold on now.
Mm-hmm.
And, and that's all zone. Similarly, this R1 designation is the...
Correct. So, from Gateway Court, that subdivision there, all the way over to Tisha Lane, and that, it will all be R1. It's all the same, same zoning.
Uh, this was brought, we go to planning and zoning and, uh, we had one gentleman that lived along Tisha Lane that had concerns and wanted to keep it as a, an open field. He didn't want neighbors to the backside of him. And I explained to him about the other uses, about the soccer fields or other type of ball fields, which we decided wasn't feasible because of traffic and noise and lights and, and so forth. And he said, oh, yeah, he wouldn't be happy with that either. Uh, and I said, but we can't necessarily continue to keep that on the, the city's inventory, so it makes best use for more citizens of our community to make it R1 so they can build more homes for people to live in, which are high demand in our community, so.
All right.
What's the value of the homes that are supposed to be put up there?
There's not a value assigned. It's a minimum square footage, uh, 1,500 square foot, no slab homes allowed. So, it'll all be on basements.
All right. See, now they'll move on to public hearing to ordinances?
Mr. Mayor, I think you need to close the public hearing.
Think I did for the board.
He closed it before board comment.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
I'll close again. So, move on to ordinances then?
This is V-18 dash zero three, secondary ordinance by the Board of Alderman and City of Prairie Valley Missouri authorizing the city administrator to amend the 2017 budget to allocate funding from general fund, park fund, and waters, water sewer fund reserves for the completion of the 2017 capital project.
What ordinance, Matt?
Oh, I'm sorry, 2431. My bad.
I move we accept bill 18 dash 03 for its second reading, making it ordinance number 2431. I have motion Alderman Headley to approve bill V-18 dash 03 for its second reading, making ordinance 2431. Drive a second. Second, Alderman Bannan. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, as we discussed at the last board meeting, this is just a transfer from 2017 to 2018 to complete projects that were scheduled for completion in 2017. But, uh, through no fault of, of the city, uh, the projects were delayed by the contractors.
Comments or discussions? See none, non-fair please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Six zero, Mayor. Alderman Bannan.
Yes.
Alderman West.
Yes.
Alderman Headley.
Yes.
Alderman Alden.
Yes.
Alderman Rodden.
Yes.
Alderman R. R. S. Six zero, Mayor. This is bill number V-18 dash zero four, an ordinance changing the zoning for certain land in Green Valley from agricultural to R1 single family.
Mayor, I move to accept bill 18 dash five for its first reading and bring it back for the second reading by Todd Ollman.
I have motion Alderman Headley to approve bill V-18 dash zero four for its first reading, bring it back by Todd Ollman for its second reading. Drive a second.
Second.
Second, Alderman Headley. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, this is the property that we just, uh, had to hold the public hearing over. Uh, Mr. Murphy can answer any questions you may have in addition.
Any additional comments or questions?
How close are these lanes to be to the houses that are already there?
Um, well, it's not designed yet, but it would be, um, the typical. So, from rear to rear, it's, the minimum is 30 feet from property line to the back of the house. So, it would be the, the rules would be the same as anywhere else where you have streets that go back to back.
When will, when will you guys put out the, uh, paperwork to get everything platted? Put, or put it out for the developers?
So, the RFP was out and we got, uh, those bids, uh, back in last week and we are reviewing those.
Discussing those in executive session.
Any additional questions or comments? See none, non-fair please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Six zero, first, Mayor. This is bill V-18 dash zero five, an ordinance amending chapter 242 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Prairie Valley, Missouri pertaining to background and records checks of coaches and volunteers with youth recreational programs.
Mayor, I move we accept bill 18 dash 05 for its first reading and bring it back for its second reading by Todd Ollman. I have motion Alderman Headley to approve bill V-18 dash 05 for its first reading, bring it back by Todd Ollman for its second reading. Drive a second.
Second.
Second, Alderman Arnold. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, this ordinance is, uh, just in effect to change the screening process that we have for volunteers to make it more comprehensive. Uh, the current process that we use, uh, can have some misses on criminal background checks. Uh, I'll let Mr. Davies kind of explain the details of this.
Uh, yeah, so we, uh, passed, uh, the, the original ordinance back in 2007. Um, and that particular, uh, ordinance initiated background screenings through Division of Family Services, um, which is a, a free service offered by the state. And at that point in time, we thought that was the, the best route to go, uh, because of not being a cost involved, whether that was paid by the city or by the applicant. And that particular search just was strictly anything related to a child, whether it was physical abuse, sexual abuse, neglect, malt treatment, and so forth. But what that search lacked was any kind of a, a criminal record, uh, at the state or federal level. Um, and a sex offender registry for 50 states, um, just looking very, um, and, and several other things. So, um, this really mirrors, uh, what the standard is today in parks and recreation field as far as, uh, background screening for those volunteers, whether it's for coaching youth sports or, or any other recreational program or class on municipal facilities. So, really, this ordinance is just bringing it up to the, to the national standard for screening, uh, of these individuals.
Any questions or comments? See none, non-fair please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Six zero, first, Mayor.
Move on to resolutions?
Resolution R-18 dash 14, a resolution by the Board of Alderman of the City of Prairie Valley, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with utility service company to provide maintenance to city-owned water towers.
I move that we accept resolution number, uh, R-18 14 as read.
I have motion Alderman Totten to approve resolution R-18 dash 14. Drive a second.
Second.
Second, Alderman Arnold. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, this is, uh, an annual contract that we enter into, uh, in order to, uh, serve and maintenance or maintain our, uh, existing water towers and storage facilities that we have. Uh, any specific questions can be directed to, to Mr. Arroyo.
Just kind of give you an update what this is. Basically, since 2005, we had utility services. They come in and they, uh, do the maintenance for all our water storage in the water tower, tire road. Uh, this includes like the exterior paint, the interior paint. This year, they're going to be doing the inspections on all three of the, of the, the two storage tanks that we have ground storage tanks and then the tire road elevated tank. Um, that includes, uh, screens, replacing screens, cleaning screens, filters, valves, checks, interior and exterior inspections of the tanks. Um, it is kind of a five-year cycling program. What we pay for this year includes, um, it's stretched out every year. And like, for example, next year, it'll be, uh, painting the interior of one of the ground storage tanks. And so, this does meet our DNR requirements to make sure that our water system is safe and, and safe for the public to drink.
Any questions or comments? All right. See none, non-fair please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Six zero, Mayor. This is resolution R-18 dash 15, a resolution by the Board of Alderman of the City of Prairie Valley, Missouri authorizing the city administrator to purchase water meters for the 2017 meter replacement program.
I move that we accept the resolution number R-18 15 as read.
I have motion Alderman Totten to approve resolution R-18 dash 15. Drive a second.
Second.
Second, Alderman Bannan. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, this is the, uh, eighth year of a 15-year perpetual cycle for our meter replacement program. Uh, as I said, this is an annual program in which we go through the, the city and replace a certain amount of meters. That way, we don't ever get to the point to where we have infrastructure or meters, uh, on, in, in the ground that are over 15 years old. So, um, turn it over to Rick. If, uh, there's any specific questions. I just realized I probably did your job for you, Rick.
You pretty much summed it up.
Any questions or comments? All right. See none, non-fair please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Six zero, Mayor. This is resolution R-18 dash 16, a resolution by the Board of Alderman of the City of Prairie Valley, Missouri, authorizing the Board of Alderman to enter into an agreement with the Missouri Department of Transportation for grant funded overtime for DWI enforcement and hazardous moving violation enforcement.
I move that we accept bill R-18 dash 16 as read.
I have motion Alderman West to approve resolution R-18 dash 16. Drive a second.
Second.
Alderman Headley. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, again, this is annual funding that we receive from Missouri Department of Transportation for additional enforcement, uh, both DWI and hazardous moving violations. Any questions that you have can be directed towards Chief Starbuck.
Comments or questions?
So, these are the, uh, cars that are down by the bars that take the drunks home? Is that what this is?
No.
Okay.
These are, they give extra funding and officers come in, uh, extra officers come in and they'll ride through ships and they vary four to six hours in the Pacific. They are out issuing citations for hazardous moving and especially looking for signs of driving under the influence. I don't feel like they're getting a ride, but it's like an engine.
See none, non-fair please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Six zero, Mayor.
Next up, the chairman's report?
The report.
Next up, the administrator and staff report?
Start with Mr. Davies.
Uh, Mayor and Board, just one final update on our, our youth, uh, spring numbers for baseball and softball. Last meeting had provided an update. We just, I believe, hit our registration deadline, but we're accepting placement registration. Um, at that point in time, we received about 25 to 30 more registered. So, uh, right now for, uh, this, this spring season, we're 502, uh, boys and girls registered for youth baseball and softball for this spring season, uh, which is about 25 to 30 more than, than what we had at last season plus time. So, it's not a deal over, uh, nationally.
Uh, Mr. Arroyo.
Just wanted to give you an update on the, uh, Eagles Parkway sidewalk. I think pretty much all the sidewalks in place, if you've driven past there. Uh, what we're waiting on now is Capital Electric is the one working on the signal, the pedestrian heads. So, we're still waiting on materials to come in for them to complete that. Uh, once they do come in, we'll get with the school district and kind of open, open the sidewalk up for use. But just want to give you an update. Thanks.
And I'd bet you on the spot, but are we going to look, uh, Ken had mentioned that we might look at that, why they're doing all that crosswalk stuff, look at that signal too for the green arrow?
Yes, actually, 'cause we do have an arrow, a turn arrow in the east and the west direction. And so, Capital Electric's also the one that can do some of the programming. Uh, that particular signal is, I mean, you have to know how to do binary code or something crazy. And so, we're talking with them about, um, seeing if we can create a, maybe 15, 10-second, uh, green turn arrow in either direction, um, kind of, you know, at the heavy peak hours. Uh, but it'll have to be programmed in, but we are talking with them about doing that.
All right. And I know that some residents would appreciate that in the morning, don't they? Can we get that to work out? Awesome, Bob.
Just a reminder that the election will be next Tuesday.
No further, Mr. Mayor. Okay, next up, the board of Alderman reports and comments. Alderman Arnold.
Nothing against this time.
Okay, Alderman Totten.
Well, I'd like to ask the chief if he'll do me a favor. I need the business, uh, neighborhood watch information. I have plenty of these because at the one time, they didn't have any businesses. And, but, uh, I've got a group going now and I'd like to know what the, what the rules are for the businesses. I know for the neighborhood watch what I do, but I don't know if there's any specific rules that the businesses need to follow. I have plenty of these. Would you know, if, could you look it up for me?
As far as what business owners do in the legislature?
What, what the rule is for the ne- huh? I need to know that.
Yeah, um, please, there's...
I'd appreciate it. Thank you. And I'd also like to say thank you for the wonderful people in my neighborhood. We had, uh, and I'd like to say thank you to the, uh, baseball team for Green Valley School District. They came over to my house and... They came over to my house and Chuck doesn't have to worry about cans in the front yard for a while, although I did get two bags the next day, but, uh, they sat and smashed cans to go to the food pantry service in Green Valley. So they deserve a big thank you and a hurrah from everybody.
All right. Alderman Coleman.
Yes, um, I, I need to bring up, uh, our friendly patch out there in front of Papa Murphy's. Probably heard it a thousand times, but it's, uh, it's.
Yeah, we say we, we are very sensitive.
Okay. Awesome. It, it's, it's gotten pretty bad now, so I just want to bring that.
I got two, I got two calls today.
Yep.
We ought to figure out what, I mean, they went all the way down on that, didn't they? Did they do a deep repair on that and it still?
No, I don't know if they just, they need to go far enough out. You know, our recommendation is to then look at concrete instead of asphalt, but we're going to make that decision. Yeah, they went pretty deep in the last patch. Kind of on very, over an edge of it, so I don't know if they just need to go far.
Public Works said they're having trouble with a lot of the stuff coming up off the road because there's a spot on Walnut and Greg. I believe that it's riding on the sidewalk line when you get to the street and that, but, uh, and they deserve a kudos too because they were out when it was raining that real bad day, digging leaves out of the ditches so the waters would drain. And guess who was out again today? Public Works digging ditches again. So they get kudos.
That's all I have, Mayor. All right, Alderman Heatherly.
Thanks for bringing it up, Jeff, I was going to ask the same thing. Um, Chief, can you give an update on the radar trailer and the other topics that we've traded emails on concerning?
Yes, I think we do in all the departments, part, uh, three hour trailers and time, those, both of those are completely disrepair. Uh, in pricing, the items that you see are most commonly used with a radar, a D, a trailer, those according to which ones you use, those ones price range is from six to eight thousand dollars. Uh, and they include shipping also, uh, and interior. The, uh, standalone, the, the signs which are most commonly attached to a, a light bulb, uh, those will run on the average from, uh, is there, they run from the twenty-five hundred to thirty-two hundred range and those, you know, sign how you get the sign you want and whether they are AC or solar power, solar powered, well, that's like. On the, on the, uh, system that's actually the question about the program, I don't really know. It's a program that some police departments have got around the city where they actually train, you know, youths and volunteers to ride their own cars down the street, for this, and some points about speeding, and they will use a police department radar gun and actually take radar readings on passive, they do not follow them, they do not issue tickets, they take no action. They merely, uh, take the reading and, you know, if a vehicle was over, I believe, ten miles an hour, they, uh, take their license number and try to identify a vehicle. And it can be far than, um, certain criteria, some police departments, and then they kind of warning notice to the owner saying they're far and then sort of doing this. There's different criteria, different departments do it different ways.
What are you and your, your department's thoughts on that, just in general?
Well.
Not to put you on the spot, but just, I, I mean, it's.
I like to research, uh, how that relationship is done, but I didn't see a lot of more articles that were written a few years ago.
For the outcome?
It's good to have programs, but you also can be digging, has there been any downside to it?
Right.
There are liability issues and problems. Uh, we currently have, uh, also our patrol cars are equipped with radar in the vehicles. We also have three, the handheld radar units, which take a little bit more maintenance, they're, they're a little bit touchy. Uh, those are one of the normal existences of use. So it's something we can use in research, I'd like to know a little bit more about it. But also in discussing that with someone here, just given the day and age, you have to be real careful. Somebody says, why is that touring car sitting out here and why is it slumped down and why are you pointing something? Uh, that could be misinterpreted and I don't want conversations, people on the street picking out, who are you and what are you doing? Yeah, it's a national concept.
Chief, um, under the first two options, is there one you find more effective than the other?
Uh, both of them have some advantages, obviously the trailer units, you can pick them up and roll them around them, but they, you have to be careful of those and we've had those that are sometimes going to be damaged by passing cars, they'll, they'll head them or knock them over or just handle them to them. Uh, they've really improved, uh, the quality of those since the last one that we, we had here. Some would like to research any more. The, uh, standalone that you now on the, on the side, they, they can be effective too. And they have a lesser battery life, they can stand off, but they, they both have some, some action.
And especially if you have someone run around and tell everybody there's camera and they're taking pictures, it slows them down.
Nope.
Guess who did that?
Alderman West?
I think that's the time.
Alderman Bannan?
Couple of things, um, I have it right that the candidate forum is tomorrow evening. Is that right?
Yeah.
And then, uh, at the next school board meeting on the twelfth of April, they will swear in a new, uh, board member, Jared English, and also be reorganizing the board. And there's also, uh, in the general election, folks will see on the ballot, a, uh, an initiative for a, a new bond, a bond issue for another expansion to the high school.
Okay. Uh, next up, uh, mayor's report. Uh, just one thing, I had talked to, I know I've seen Ken and Ryan message about this, but, uh, possibility of adding the flashing crosswalk signal on Main Street like we did on Duncan Road, trying to what's being increased in businesses we're seeing down there. But I know it'll, from my understanding, this would be easier to do it at the Walnut End because if we do it at the Front Street End, we have to worry about the railroad and MODOT. If we do it on the Walnut End, we don't have to worry about MODOT. My question is, how long's the approval process is that for MODOT thing? If this is something we're going to look at budgeting for next year, do we need to get started on that, MODOT approval now?
Probably just sort of assume it's possible.
Okay. Would that be, I guess, something the board would be interested in adding one of those flashing crosswalk signals now? So then, have them start getting the approval anyways for MODOT, then next year we can budget for it. I think it's about twenty-nine thousand dollars is what the other one cost us, so we're assuming that, about how much it would be.
You, you're, the problem is though, on Front Street, there's more traffic going across there and the people aren't paying attention because of all the cars parked along the way. Now, I get to listen to this.
Oh, I know, I, I'm trying to find a, trying to find a solution, but my understanding is we go to Front Street End, we have to get some railroad approval also. And that will probably be bigger hiccup than.
Oh, boy.
Need to also look at the fact if we put it on one end, don't put it on the other? Or does there any negative situation where we're not providing the same safety at both crossings?
I don't know.
Just me.
I mean, how, how tough you think, I mean, can we call the railroad and see how big of a deal would be? I just know other times that we, where the railroad always has.
Is it, is it really required if you got the parking on the other side of the street there?
Right now, we have, we have the crosswalk, we just don't have it signaled. The problem running into is people aren't slowing down on Main Street for pedestrians. And, you know, we've added businesses down there, we're getting ready to add the restaurant down on the Walnut End. And there's going to be a lot of people going back and forth there, I don't, there's got to be a way of, so my idea was if we put the light crosswalk in where they can hit the button, it starts flashing, they can get across. I mean, ideally, it would probably make more sense on the Front Street End because that larger parking lot's across there. But if we're going to have a run to hiccup with the railroad.
I don't know, should we just start the process and go?
Okay, see.
Thank you.
The board with, I don't think we want to put two down there, that's probably, that's, probably two, I mean, can you put two that close?
We can look and see what the options even are, see if there's something that, that one or the other.
Good. I could see that being, uh, there, there, there would be two crosswalks close together. I, I hear the, the need for it on, on the Front Street End, but also there's parking on both sides of Front Street. So, uh, we would have to look at how much pedestrian traffic crosses that front versus Walnut. Um, but that's something we can do and report back to you.
Yeah, I mean, except now, we have enough time, we get on, we get into it now, we can get it worked out.
Well, since we got the new shop.
Hmm?
And the lady that has the new, uh, secondhand type where she'll buy and sell, well, she's, she's doing a lot of business and, uh.
Well, you can note, you know, I noticed an increase of car, an increase in cars down there and.
Oh, yeah.
Doesn't, so I mean, that's, you know, going to be more pedestrians and I don't want something.
She's probably part of the, but.
Get ran over.
That she makes.
And then my next thing is when I was bringing all this up, someone brought up, and I know there's really nothing we can do here, but especially with the pool season coming up and parks being heavier, heavier, heavier used, we have, you know, kids on bikes and whatnot, whatnot that just cut across right here. And when really our crosswalk is there, I mean, I don't know if there's some type of, I don't know if they're just, don't know the crosswalk is there or they're just taking it because it's shorter. I mean, I don't know if we put some kind of signage up that's, you know, pointed towards the crosswalk. If, I also want something, you know, I just don't want to think that we didn't do anything because we know that there's a lot of kids cutting across, you know, to go from the pool to Sonic or.
I'm going to say right now, I think it's still good up to it. So one of the problems with putting any crosswalks down, so that it becomes a, a block, also, I don't know, kind of issue with. No, I don't think we're talking about making it, trying to.
Yeah, trying to, trying to get the pedestrians that usually exist the crosswalk we have.
One of the things that I don't know if it exists, but maybe if there's some sort of signage like right here on our drive, because that seems to be where people cut across where it says like not crossing and has an arrow pointed to the actual crosswalk or something to that effect.
Well.
They're not paying attention to the sign.
But is, is it worth an attempt if they were trying to keep them from getting injured?
Yeah.
So they're just not trying anything and, I mean, yeah, I don't, I don't know if it'll cut now, I mean, they cut down a little bit of it, but it's not going to prevent it.
The sign shows you, but.
Yeah. And it may, I mean, I don't know, if it gets too bad, we may just have to put somebody out there and just tell the kids you need to.
No, I told them to go down the alley behind the businesses to get down to the Walnut End and then they go on the sidewalk. Is what they've been doing, some of them are doing, because they were riding on the sidewalk and the business and that's not good. I've been a pain in the butt.
Uh, that is all I have. We do have a need for an executive session four, or legal, um, leasing and individual identifiable personnel records. Almost all of them. Yeah, one, two, and thirteen. All right, so one, two, and four.
Thirteen.
All right, we retain a motion then to adjourn the executive session. Motion from Alderman Heatherly, second Alderman Coleman. Any discussion? See none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All pose the same sign. Alderman Arnold, Alderman Totten.
Yes.
Alderman Coleman.
Alderman Heatherly, yes, Alderman West?
Yes.
Alderman Mayor?
All right, we'll adjourn the executive session.